Yes, sir. Where they was feeding the hunger. The hunger. Look at this diva. I know. Who she is? Look. Where you at there? Where you at there?
Where?
Shemene.
That's all I got. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Nineteen present.
Quorum being present, please join me first in a moment of silence for Ms. Anita Banks, former, she was the wife of former State Senator Jette Banks. She celebrated her ninety-fifth birthday on December the third and she passed on January second. And many of you remember when we had her here at the Board and we gave her a resolution on her ninetieth birthday. So Ms. Banks has done many things all throughout our city and she indeed will be missed. So join me in a moment of silence. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Also just want to welcome you all back. I know that when Aldermen have time off, it's not really time off because people continue to call morning, noon, and night, New Year's Day, Christmas Day, Christmas Eve. So I appreciate all the work that you all do throughout the year and I'm looking forward to working with you this session. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Happy New Year, Mr. President and my colleagues. I'd like to wish you all a Happy New Year and hopefully we're off to a good start. I'd like to recognize Board of Education member, Dr. Joyce Roberts, who's in the gallery today.
Alderman from twenty, oh, hold on, Alderman from fourteen, please.
I'd also like to recognize our local law enforcement. Yesterday was National Law Enforcement Day. I'd like to commend them for their efforts in trying to keep our city safe and pledge that the Board of Educate, Board of Aldermen will continue to work with them.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Sure. Happy New Year, everyone. I'd like to recognize Mr. Jay Shimon from Square in the balcony. Good to see you back at City Hall.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, my esteemed colleague Carol Howard. Alderman Howard stole my thunder this morning. I was calling to say welcome to a new twenty-sixth resident, Dr. Joyce Roberts. Thank you for being here this morning and to tell you all Happy New Year.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Aldermen from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. As we gather here on December tenth, it was on this day that Elvis Presley recorded Heartbreak Hotel in nineteen fifty-six, but more importantly, this is National Argyle Day, which just happens to be the favorite color of the Alderman from the twenty-third, Argyle.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, December thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move to approve the members' minutes dated December thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions from any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions from any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz and Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services to accept a grant award from the St. Louis Community Foundation in the amount of twenty-six thousand for the current fiscal year and to expand those funds for City of St. Louis U Matter, appropriating such funds and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services upon approval of the Board of Estimant and Apportionment to expand such funds as permitted by the grant award agreement containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen, thirteen million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to be used to make funds available to mitigate rates on an annual basis during the term of the airport use and lease agreement commencing July first twenty, July first, twenty sixteen, containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Spencer, and Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance prohibiting the carrying of concealed firearms by persons who are subject to a restraining order or who have been convicted of misdemeanor crime of domestic violence as provided in its ordinance and the firearm such person is in receipt of, receipt of, has been shipped or transported in interstate foreign commerce as prohibited by Title eighteen, Section nine, two, two, eight, and nine of the United States Code and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Olita Avenue and January Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on January Avenue at Olita Avenue regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Olita Avenue at January Avenue and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill one eighty-seven, to Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill one eighty-eight, to Public Safety, Board Bill one eighty-nine, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill one ninety. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one seventy-one, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Martin, Rice, Navarro, Green, Tyus, Spencer, Middlebrook, Mohammed, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Vacoro, and Norrion, an ordinance prohibiting the departments, offices, and other divisions of the City of St. Louis, the Mayor's Office, the Board of Aldermen, the offices of the city, cities, collective revenue, treasurer, recorder of deeds, licensed collector, circuit attorney, sheriff, and the city's Board of Election Commissioners from asking applicants for employment about their salary history, including wages, benefits, and any other compensation unless otherwise provided therein and containing the severability clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committee.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-six, twelve, and Avenue area. Board Bill eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Norrion, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for seventy-two, zero, two, through seventy-two, twenty, Arsenal Street redevelopment area. Board Bill one twenty-two, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for fifty-two, twenty-three Botanical Avenue area. Board Bill one twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for the Evans Avenue, North Newstead Avenue, Pendleton Avenue, Scatter Sites redevelopment area. Board Bill one forty-two, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-six, thirty-three, through thirty-five Allen Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill one sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-one, twenty-seven North Eleventh Street area. Board Bill one sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the thirty-four hundred Chippewa and thirty-eight, zero, nine Louisiana Avenue area. Board Bill one sixty-seven, sponsor Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four, twenty-six South Compton Avenue area. I'm sorry, let me go back. Board Bill one sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four hundred Chippewa Street and thirty-eight, zero, nine Louisiana Avenue area. Board Bill eighty-six, committee sub as amended.
Eighty-eight.
I'm sorry, eighty-eight. Committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderman Martin, President Reed, Rice, Ornowitz, Pam Boyd, Murphy, Howard, Norrion, Spencer, Ingracia, Jeffrey Boyd, Gunther, Vacoro, and Kotar, an ordinance repealing ordinance six, nine, four, two, seven, approved February twenty-first, twenty thirteen, and pertaining to city public works contract, tax increment finance projects, and St. Louis bonded projects, workforce diversity, and establishing apprenticeship, training, construction workforce development, and a community jobs board, and in lieu thereof establishing new ordinance pertaining to the same and containing severability clause and effective date. Board Bill one forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for Washington, Vander Vander, and Wright Pendleton redevelopment area. Board Bill one forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Vander Vander Finney, Washington, Taylor redevelopment area approved by ordinance six, nine, four, one, zero, dated February the twenty-first, twenty thirteen, by extending the implementation schedule, now calling for projects to be completed by May first, twenty twenty-nine. Board Bill one fifty-six, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing the City of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in one or more series in a total principal amount of not exceed fifty million dollars, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto and authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval of execution of other documents or as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent thereof. Board Bill one sixty-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance dissolving the special allocation fund for Lafayette Square Historic District, fifty-seven hundred block of Arsenal, and terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment areas and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill one sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance dissolving the special allocations fund for the Hatley Dean Building redevelopment areas, terminating the designation of certain respective portions of the City of St. Louis, Missouri relating to the redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill one seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of projects therein. Board Bill one forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the First Amendment to Automated Tell machine Concession Agreement between the city and Bank of America containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-six, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the Third Amendment to Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement AL four, four, two, to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Fuel System containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second and retained a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Third reading consent.
Board Bill one twenty, floor sub. Board Bill one thirty-two. Board Bill one thirty-seven. Board Bill one thirty-nine. And Board Bill one fifty-three.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-five aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill one twenty, floor sub. One thirty-two, one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, and Board Bill one fifty-three.
All other business being suspended, President shall in open session affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
For adoption of the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one ninety-eight, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, St. Louis Regional All Hazard Migration Plan, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, oh, Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution one ninety-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask.
Unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent on resolution number one ninety-eight, St. Louis Regional All Hazard Mitigation Plan for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five.
Hearing, hearing no objection. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, would you like to move to adopt resolution one ninety-eight?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt resolution number one ninety-eight.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Resolution two zero two, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Green, Alderman Rice, Alderman Norrion.
Can we have some order? I know this is the first day back after the holidays, but we need a little bit of order so we can still get the business done today. Alderman from the fourteenth, I mean, hold on a second. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Resolution two zero two, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Green, Alderman Rice, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Middlebrook, and Alderman Gunther, supporting ballot initiative for Missouri Medicaid expansion.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on first reading of resolution two oh two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to request unanimous consent on resolution two oh two, supporting a ballot initiative for the expansion of Medicaid.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Director of Health, Dr. Echols, and Mr. A.J. Bockelman of Healthcare for All came down to our health committee last, before, before break and was very instructive about the very significant cost of not expanding Medicaid to the residents of the state of Missouri, in particular within the City of St. Louis. We have almost thirty percent of our residents living at or below poverty and not extend a failure of the state of Missouri to expand Medicaid and take federal dollars to provide much-needed healthcare access to residents in the state of Missouri and within our city is a failure on all of our part. And this resolution calls, expresses the intent of this body to support the ballot initiative of expanding Medicaid. And with that, I close, Mr. President, and ask for unanimous consent.
Would you like to make a motion to adopt? You already have unanimous consent.
Move to adopt resolution two oh two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, entertained seconded by Alderman from the ninth and Alderman from the fourteenth. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that my name was added as a, as a cosponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the twenty-eighth. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to be added?
To the resolution?
Yep. Alderman from the eighteenth, Alderman from the nineteenth, would someone like to just make a motion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
I would like to make a motion, we embank resolution number two oh two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third and twenty-first and a little here. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution two oh two and it's been embanked. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Under miscellaneous unfinished business, we had Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to refer Board Bill one oh seven back to the Public Safety Committee.
And it's on the informal calendar, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's been moved. Please restate your motion one more time, Alderman for everyone.
Mr. President, I would like to refer Board Bill one oh seven back to the Committee on Public Safety.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first that we refer, refer Board Bill one oh seven back to public safety. It's been seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any, any further discussions? Been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, Board Bill one oh seven, please assign it back to public safety.
So noted. That is the extent of miscellaneous and unfinished business.
Announcements.
Wednesday, January the fifteenth, twenty twenty, Health and Human Services will have a meeting at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Rules Committee will meet at ten a.m. in the Leisure Room. Public Safety will have a meeting at eleven a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, January the seventeenth, the full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to wish early birthday to my esteemed colleague from the tenth. His birthday is January the thirteenth, this Monday.
Uh-oh. Alderman from the.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to wish maybe a happy birthday to my compatriot from the twenty-second. We share a birthday, but we don't share the same parents, we found out.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to wish belated happy birthday to former Alderman Frank Williamson. His birthday was January second, same as mine, so we also share the same birthdays.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from twelfth.
President, members of the Board, I'd be remiss and in trouble if I didn't forget to mention that my wife and I celebrated our thirty-six year anniversary the other day.
Oh, wow. Wow. Congratulations. That's a milestone. Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Hold on, there we go. I just would like to let everyone know that the St. Louis Zoo is looking for community input on both the zoo location in the city as well as their new north campus. And so they're going to be having some community input sessions and you can go online to stlzoo.org/inputsessions to find out more, but they're going to be on January eighteenth and January twenty-third and there's more details about how you can RSVP for those, but they're really looking to make some significant improvements and want as much community engagement as possible. So I invite everyone to, to let everyone know and show up if you can. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the third.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to make this quick and easy, just wanted to say this is a brand new year for us all here in the Board, so just me personally, for anybody that I may have pissed off last session.
There's no such thing.
No.
We don't know what you're talking about.
Anybody who I may have made disgruntled over the last session irritated, we all sometimes can sometimes have that hard-working relationship where we entwult with each other, just wanted to send my condolences and apologies and say this is a year, New Year, hopefully I can be forgiven. I can be forgiven, and we can move forward and continue to work together, because this year will be no different, we will continue to work together and have our little tug-of- wars, thank you.
And, and to your point, Aldeman from the third, that tug-of-war is actually important. I mean, that's how we get to the root of these issues, and that's how we come up with better legislation. It's so important that we have the discussions that we have, and people air their differences. I mean, that, that, without that, you know, we, our legislation wouldn't touch as many people in a positive way as it does. Aldeman from the nineteenth, and then Aldeman from the twenty-sixth, Aldeman from nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to acknowledge, just in case you didn't have an opportunity, that we also lost former Assistant Superintendent of Public Schools Julius Dix. He passed last Thursday, and his funeral is this Sunday at one o'clock at Washington AME Church. For those who are not familiar, he was one of the high-ranking managers of our public school when we had the Bannaker District and all of that, and even though we had disproportionate funds for North St. Louis for education, him, Samuel Shepard, and many others made sure that the children did get the attention that they needed and all the other things aside from just actual ABCs to make sure that they had an opportunity to be good citizens and move forward in this society, and I wanted to give condolences to his family, thank you.
Thank you. Aldeman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I just wanted to remind everybody that back in December, we passed the resolution one eighty-nine, embanked to make January National Sex Trafficking Awareness Month in the city along with the state of Missouri. They're having their day on the twenty-first, on Tuesday, I'll be traveling up there, and I hope all of you all can join me, or some of you all can join me, and I would like to thank President Reed and his office for helping to arrange National Sex Trafficking Awareness Day in the City Hall, it'll be on thirty-first, Friday the thirty-first, so hopefully you all can support us, then we have a little challenge we're going to be doing through the departments to see who can donate the most personal hygiene products for our ladies that we secure out of these tragic situations, so again, be aware, share all this information with your constituents, keep praying for these ladies and men that are victims of this, of this tragedy, and hopefully I'll see you all there, thank you.
All right, thank you. And let's congratulate Aldeman from the twenty-sixth on her anniversary, right? It was a big one, right? Yeah, yeah, it was a big one, I heard.
My anniversary was January the first, two thousand twenty, we celebrated fourteen years of marriage, me and my esteemed colleague and amazing Alderman of the fifth ward, Tamika Hubbard's brother, Rodney Hubbard, and I celebrated fourteen years on January the first, thank you.
Congratulations. Finally, I just want to wish my wife a happy birthday, her birthday was January seventh, so she puts up with me each and every day, so I thank her for that, so let's give her a round of applause and congratulation on her birthday. Any further announcements, any further announcements, any further announcements? Aldeman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to excuse the governor, I mean, the Alderman from the fourth ward due to necessary absence.
Been moved by Aldeman from twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Aldeman, Aldeman from the tenth and Aldeman from the twenty-seventh, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Aldeman from the twenty-second, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until next week, January the seventeenth.
Move by Aldeman from twenty-second, seconded by Aldeman from the fourteenth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.